That's why I was kidding in the third period. I'm all the way out here, you need to be playing the third period.
Ready makeup?
The Falmouth School Committee meeting, and we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a silence in memory of Dan Lima, the head custodian over at Morse Pond. Thank you. Okay, so I have something very small to read right here. I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecasted and recorded on channel 14. I also remind the public, or any member of the public, who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair in place of the chair. And I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the opening.
Thanks Chair, can we take pictures?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so to keep with Alan Jacobs' tradition of quotes, I have two quotes today. The first one is, "Love recognizes no barriers. It jumps hurdles, leaps fences, penetrates walls to arrive at its destination full of hope." And that's Maya Angelou. Just for Valentine's Day today. And one more, "I know there is strength in differences between us. I know there is comfort where we overlap." And that is Amy DeFranco. Okay, so we are starting with the No Guff video?
Yes, I'd like to start the meeting with, as you know, we celebrate the No Guff Week. And Greg Gilbert, who is one of the founders of No Guff, will be speaking to the group in a minute. But I'd like to, as you know, they do an annual No Guff video every year. Thank you to Brian Switzer, and I'll let the video speak for itself.
How you doing? I'm taking over this anti-bullying video. You know why? Because bullies don't deserve any airtime. That's right, no negativity. So instead, I'm going to show you some hardworking and dedicated people that live in my town. I know that's a hard thing to cover in such a short video. So how am I gonna do it? Well, the best way I know. You, come with me. My plan required that I first do some teaching. You know, people are so excited to join in and help. And here's the proof. Idea: #LessBullyMoreBoogie! We got it!
I looked up at the clock on the wall, and it read 3:00 AM. Well, sometimes I wish these nights would never end. Yeah, it feels so good to get down with all my friends. Hey, we've been the house stand here for so long, I forget. But I'll tell you one thing, you know that's one gig I'll never regret. If having a ball were a crime, we all would be doing time. We're swinging, bopping, shuffing the night away. We're swinging, bopping, shuffing the night away. Yeah, we're having a ballin' at the old juke joint cafe.
Take that, bullies!
We're swinging, bopping, shuffing the night away. We're swinging, bopping, shuffing the night away. Yeah, we're having a ballin' at the old juke joint cafe.
This community is family, full of amazing people, who make this town a great place to live. So remember, keep it positive, and keep on dancing.
So this thing was one town, one family, and the district had a blast. And again, thank you to Brian Switzer and the young lady for putting that together. So our second video is a quick thank you video for the donation of the computers from the Seacrest Hotel.
Oh, I just lost you. So we should have to do...
Let's move on to public comment, and then we'll come back to it.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to public comment, and then we'll come back to the video. Would anybody here like to speak for public comment? Okay.
Yeah, hi. My name is Bill Mock, and I'm a teacher at the Falmouth High School. And I would like to request that the school committee give me a moment on an agenda in the future to consider the sanctioning of a trip that I'm planning to take with EF Tours.
Mr. Mock, no. We're not gonna have that conversation right now.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely, but...
And I'm not gonna put it on to another agenda. And that message did come to you from my office. We do have a policy around that. That's a private company, and we can't have that conversation right now, or at a school committee meeting, until I have that conversation again with you.
Okay, I would like to see that policy. Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other comments? How we doing, Ryan? Okay, so why don't we move on to Theodora for our student advisory report?
Well, I have these surveys coming around, my teacher surveys. I was planning on doing these next year, but I decided to go forward with it this year. And basically, Mrs. Gans and I worked on this this past week, and they went out today. The teachers got them in their emails. And I can see the responses. And so, this is just a packet with the questions. It's not any answers. It's just the questions that I ask teachers. And you can take a look at that if you have any questions. You can shoot in your email. And also, a committee of 12 students was formed to be working at this issue, this homework policy. And the students on that list, I have them right here, are: Daniel Jessen, Philip Jessen, Mia Bluestein, Melissa Hand, Caroline Bag, Sarah Christa, Caitlin Olivera, Kate Cole, Kate Lima, Kinsel Steeman, and Brooke Mueller, and myself. And I guess we'll just keep you updated on our actions moving forward. And also, the junior class and sophomore class are doing a bake sale fundraiser this week. The juniors sold today, and I think they're selling tomorrow as well. And we're selling baked goods on Friday. And, let's see. I also did a little survey, mini-survey, on Clipper Time, just to get an idea of where that was at with students. I asked 35, got 31 responses. And the pros I got, I just have a little list here. I'll try to read a few of them. People said it helps get homework done in school, and to get help from teachers directly. It's good to de-stress if you don't have any work to do. And it's a good replacement for sitting after if you don't have the time. It's good to make up tests and quizzes if you're out sick. And some of the cons I got, well, they're just kind of constructive criticism. And 30 minutes is not enough time to finish what you're working on, some people said. And it should be after lunch, because kids are hungry by that time of day. And if kids could schedule themselves, it'd be easier. I know that you can request, but sometimes you don't get that request in, or the teacher doesn't, like, another teacher requests on top of that, and so you can't go to see that teacher. And that's about it.
Theodora, could you just explain to us what Clipper Time is?
Oh, Clipper Time is basically teachers in academic support centers during the day after third period. And it's a half an hour, about half an hour. I think it goes from 10:09 or 10:12 to 10:45. And it's basically, students have a mentor on Mondays. And you schedule the rest of your week which teachers you want to meet with, and then you'll go to that class on your scheduled day. And we use this website called Enriching Students, so students can check on their schedules.
Thank you. Questions for Theodora?
Just a comment. Thank you so much for all... I don't know where you get the time and the energy.
Seriously.
But I really appreciate it. And it doesn't, you know, I don't think that we don't, aren't paying attention to the many things you bring us, because it's really helpful and very insightful.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate how thorough you are, that you're really going from all angles to figure out this homework piece. So thank you.
I appreciate the support.
Anything else? Okay, how are we doing?
We're all set.
We're all set? Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Clark Wayne, and I serve as the general manager of the Seacrest Beach Hotel, a Delaware North property. We are honored to be able to participate within the community and make the investment within this lovely community that we all call home, Falmouth. It is indeed a privilege to be able to work with an organization such as Delaware North, who has the commitment toward the actual community. It's a great ability that we have in order to be able to connect, and we want to utilize that to invest in our future.
And we had the opportunity to donate what turned out to be 36 PCs and monitors and peripherals to the Falmouth school system. We feel very strongly about the education in the Falmouth. And it's a tremendous school system, and I'm happy to be a part of it. And we're just happy to be able to help out and make an impact.
So the Falmouth Public Schools, through our school committee, Mr. John Fenari, we were very, very lucky to be the recipients of a computer donation from the Seacrest Hotel, mother company being Delaware North. And we received 35 computers that will be distributed among our elementary schools. And we're just really, really appreciative and really lucky to receive the donation. It will really assist students in their learning. Computers are a tool we use all the time. And so, being able to accept the donations of these computers, because we do have certain requirements that have to be met in order for us to accept computers. And so, through our IT director, Cindy Tugus, and Mr. Fenari, we were able to bring these computers into the district and benefit all kids in their learning. So we are very appreciative and very, very thankful to the Seacrest Hotel and Delaware North, and in particular, Mr. Fenari.
Are they replacing us with an updated version?
Good afternoon, my name is...
In addition to Clark Wayne, who appeared as a general manager, I want to thank Mike Ferrier, our IT manager, who prepped the 36 PC. It ended up being 36, it was 35 at that time, and we got adding one more. And then, on a note, the infrastructure management dynamic of it, I think it speaks very well for overall district, for Nancy Taylor and Patrick Murphy's infrastructure management for the district. And in this case, the IT asset management of Cindy Tugus and her team, Mike Falcone, Robin DeBrao, who are actually, that they're able to incorporate these resources, and that they readily know who has what, where, and when. And in this case, we are happy to provide the how. And then, plus, thanks to Sharon Reed, who I'm learning is like the linchpin of the district. And the scary, talented Ryan Weber, who really captures the pulse of what's going on in the district. I just thought so.
Thank you.
Yes, I would love to. I'd like to ask Mr. Gilbert and Mrs. Geisler to come forward, please, and have a seat. If you would, please, by the mic and off, Mr. Gilbert. So can I just preface this real briefly? That I had an opportunity at the Morse Pond School a week or so ago to teach a health class and a phys ed class, and the focus was No Guff. And I used your script to teach the class, and I thought it was very informative in terms of the history of No Guff. So if you could just spend a few minutes on that, and then speak to the week of No Guff, and what it means to be given a No Guff Award. And then, if you would be willing to award students and community members the No Guff Award, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. I was told to keep it to three minutes, which might be chatty.
That's impossible.
But in 2001, myself and the other adjustment counselor at the time, Joe Mello, we had done a lot of conflict resolution and mediations between kids throughout the year. And we just felt that, you know, there was an awful lot of negativity, kids talking behind each other's backs, and saying things about each other. And this was long before we had all the social media, which is maybe even more amplified. But what I would hope was to do something proactive, something positive, to kind of change the climate. And I wanted to do a day where you couldn't speak negatively about anybody. And I know I talked to a few of the kids around my office that day. And I said, "I need a word that, you know, would work." And one of the young men said, "Well, my dad used to say..." "My grandfather used to say, 'Don't give me any guff.'" And I said, "Gee, my dad used to say that all the time." Which kind of meant backtalk, I think, at the time. But I said, "Gee, that'd be great." So, made this little international no sign, guff. And I went to Doug Rivasill, who was a silkscreening teacher in geographic arts. And I said, "Hey, can you make me some t-shirts? Because we could, you know, kind of bone this thing off." Of course, this was not funded, or mandated, or approved, or anything else. It was just kind of a grassroots thing. And Doug said, "Sure, yeah, I'll get to work on it." And the neat thing about it was, a lot of kids got involved that traditionally weren't necessarily the high flyers in school. Some of the kids that weren't as successful. And we ended up with like 670 t-shirts. And I don't know where they came from. But we decided to jump into a pep rally in that spring. And I remember I called a few kids down from the bleachers that had made some real progress in terms of how they treat people. And it was very informal, but at the same time, there was an effect of so many kids having the t-shirts, being involved. And Doug Rivasill, who made the t-shirts, unfortunately was killed in a tragic motorcycle accident right out here on Sandwich Road. And before that, we had stood in the hallway, I think, a couple of days after the No Guff Day, and just said that we really felt like it was one of the best days we'd ever had at Falmouth High School. Since that time, the next year, we formally added the student awards, which I think are probably the best thing that we can do to actually have peers acknowledge kids that speak positively, that don't talk about other kids. It's universal. I've never been involved with it where they didn't pick the right kids. And it's really apparent to kids that, you know, that are rewarded or acknowledged, that, you know, these are the people that they really respect and admire. And then the next year, we started throwing in a faculty award. And that's been a great thing, too, for our school, because we have people, multiple winners around here, that, you know, basically win it all the time. But it's a source of great pride for the school. And now, thanks to what Brian Switzer's been doing with videos, thanks to particularly VIPS, Tracy Craggo, Drade, the VIPS... You know, they have basically just made this thing so incredible in terms of its scope and the community. And then, Cape Cod Aggregates, and of course, Cavosa, for being our sponsors, the Russo family and Carl Cavosa. I know, I think it was 2011, I forget, when they said I could get a corporate sponsor instead of going around begging for money. And I know Carl just said, "Oh, I'd love to do it." And then now, like I said, t-shirts are everywhere. I was in Puerto Rico over Christmas, and I saw two No Guff t-shirts. One of them was my kid. But, no, I think the beauty of it is the t-shirt, you know, and what it stimulates is the conversation. And people go, "Oh, what's that?" I think the definition of guff now means nonsensical talk. In England, it means something else, and I won't go into. But we kind of use it as anything, you know, negative. And I think it's really caught on. And now, with our pledge, we've added texting...
Posting.
Posting. I don't even know what that is. That I will not do that. And now, we've expanded it from a day, obviously, to a week. And I think all the people that have been involved say, "Hey, listen, we should do this all the time. It should not be, you know, so exceptional." But by trying to emphasize the week in terms of different activities, different opportunities for kids... I was at the assembly at the Lawrence School last two Fridays ago. And it was awesome to see all the team kids get acknowledged. So there were, I believe, two from each team. Well, there's six teams at Lawrence. So, you know, you had 12 kids honored, the ovation that they got. It made me really proud to see how much kids are really proud of each other. And I think, you know, that's why we're here tonight. I think it's the highest compliment for a parent of a kid to get this kind of an award. Anybody's eligible. You don't have to be athletic, or academic, or tall, or strong. You can get it by, you know, having the right attitude. And I think some people that are shy have an advantage, just because they don't talk as much. At the same time, I think some of these people don't even think negative thoughts, which, that's the next level. So, did I do all right, three minutes?
Well, thank you for letting us present these awards here tonight. It's so nice that we can do it in front of the school committee and have a reception afterwards, so thank you. And we also have added a community award winner. This is now our fourth person that we're gonna be recognizing for the fourth year. And then we also have a principals award that we've been doing for the past several years that we've added. And thanks to Greg, he's just always looking for ways to improve it and just really make it just that much more meaningful. And the whole community is really finding out about it, so thank you.
Sure.
So we're gonna call the winners up, for the recipients. These are the awards that they're gonna be receiving. We have them just packaged right now. But a local vendor does it, and she really does a beautiful job. And we've got the No Guff logo and everything on that, so... All right, for the freshmen, we want to recognize Kate Brody. I would also like to recognize Marvell Nicholson. Danielle Shay for the sophomores has won it two years in a row now. And Nathaniel Evans, unfortunately, he's sick, but he was the other recipient for the sophomores. And then for the juniors... For the juniors, we have Kate Delaney. And Patrick Hodgson has a basketball game, so go closer. Grace Peterson also has a basketball game right now. She's a four-time winner, though.
Seven people that have won the award four times, all four years of high school. And Grace has done it with a little bit of an asterisk, because we only vote for two now. When I first started it, we did three. So, to be more competitive. So, that's quite an achievement, to win it four years from your peers. So, that's for Grace Peterson.
And then Max Burt is a three-time winner.
Max also spoke at Morse Pond with a couple of other seniors. Did a great job there, talking to the fifth and sixth graders. Good job.
And then for the staff, we have Menzie Ruthven, who's a three-time winner. And we have Daryl Morley, who has won it six times. Then for our community spirit award, we have Annie Hart Cool, who has won it just for her huge heart and love for everyone, and her just always being known for her random acts of kindness around town. And then Mary Gans apologizes, she can't be here tonight. But she does have her principals award, and she is recognizing Jonathan Prince Curlew for that. And he, basketball, it was a busy night tonight. So he just finished his game, and he didn't make it. But she did just write a few notes down. And she says, "Jonathan has a fantastic attitude and outlook, a work ethic that is unparalleled, and a constant smile on his face. In addition, he is a well-liked athlete and a straight A student, with his name appearing on our high honor roll quarter after quarter. She's so proud of Jonathan and honored and humbled to have named him as her principals recipient." So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
We're gonna go have our reception now.
Yep.
And we will be coming back, so... Five minutes, five minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let's just have a look.
Mm-hmm.[532.41]
Who are you playing? They're pretty good. Usually, they're good most of the time. Oh, yeah, I know that. Like I said, I'm coached at the high school and the college level, so I know that.
Well, that was fun. It really was fun.
Thank you for having us.
In fact, I hear all these people arguing or questioning why they fired the Bruins coach, and if you watch his strategy.
Very well done. And Vips works really hard with that at Falmouth High School. And I think, I really commend Greg Gilbert for being able to keep it going and growing it. Because over time, that's a really difficult thing to do. And it only gets better.
I had an amazing honor to be a board with that stuff. Thank you. So now, we are going to open the public hearing on our 2018 school budget, fiscal year 2018 school budget. And I just want to go over some rules of our policy here. So there are materials over there for, about the budget, all the budget materials. And we'll open it up to comments or questions for the school committee, and then to the public. Anyone have any comments or questions after that? And then we will close the hearing. So, school committee members, anyone have any comments or questions about it? Okay.
So I appreciate that, yet again, the process has been really organized and clear, and with very long-range planning, which makes it so nice to look at a budget that's not solely focused on this year, but is prioritizing our needs for many years. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll just add one quick comment. I know that the school committee and certainly the budget subcommittee has seen our budget presentation, and it has changed a little bit because we start the budget so early in the year. I just want to add that as we are doing our long-range planning, one of the needs that continues to grow is the need for clinical services in the district. So, moving forward, you will be hearing me say that over and over again, to really look at our youngest learners, and looking at how our preschool students transition into kindergarten through 4th grade. So we're really looking at intervening earlier. So as we go through this budget process, you know, things move around, things change, cohorts of kids change, you'll hear me talk about that over and over again. It's really a district need.
And one thing I've noticed in the last two or three years is Nancy's, a good doer of this, is reorganizing people. Real, I forgot the word.
Reallocation.
Reallocation of resources. I mean, and that just permeates everything, all the levels of the budget. We keep seeing that. See, I can even picture in italics in the budget. So, that's great.
Thank you. This aligns with your goals of what you've been working on, the budget, and, you know, reaching out to the public, and being very forthcoming and everything.
And answering questions and really trying to listen. And I think the piece too, I have to share the reallocation with the principals. They do a really nice job of saying, "This is really what I need, and here's how I can rearrange my budget to accommodate that, to accommodate that need." There are times when they say, "I need it, and I don't have the money." And we have to work with principals on that. But we do our very best to stay within the town's advisory, and make sure at the same time, we meet the needs of the buildings, because that is my responsibility.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I think the great thing about the budget is your communication with the town, and the number of meetings you've had, and the input back and forth, and the openness. And I think that's really critical. The thing that concerns me about the budget is the magic world of grants. Because you go through a budget process, and then you wait till the summer to find out what you're going to get, I guess usually through federal or state, but it's still federal. And that's always very difficult to do. And so you project as best you can, but inevitably, it's really a tough situation. I know Zach and Son, you do that all the time. You're all involved with that. But that always has been a concern of mine with, sometimes we put the cart before the horse, and that's very difficult to do. But congratulations, I think you're doing a great job on that.
And it is really true, and I also preface when I speak to whether it's the public or to my central office or my administrative council, this can change. Again, we're doing the best that we can with what we know at this moment. And it can change. So they all know that there are no promises, and there are no guarantees. That's a difficult way to run buildings, difficult way to meet needs, and a difficult way to run the district. And that is the nature of the budget. Patrick and I talk about this constantly. And we do have a lot of support from the FinComp, the Town Managers Office, and certainly from Jennifer Petit, the CFO of the town. So we work really hard at making sure that that communication, and that those relationships are really strong.
Thank you. Anything else?
Strong work. Not on budget, it's not one of my subcommittees, but it's a lot of work, and just A+ for everyone who's doing it. And I'd like to echo Bill with, great job with keeping the town informed and being open with everything. I think that that's huge, and a nice reflection from the administration house.
Thank you. Anything else? Public? Any comments or questions? Okay. So I'd like a motion to close the hearing.
I'm going to close the public hearing on the budget.
A second? A second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great. Let's use the gavel for that. There we go. Yes, the hearing is closed. Okay. So next on our agenda here is the public forum on the 2017-2018 school choice seats.
So if you look in your packet, it's kind of the yellowish piece of paper, and it is the memorandum from Mr. Jovan regarding school choice for the 2017-2018 academic year, and what he is proposing and recommending to the school committee.
12.
Questions?
Classmates.
So although it's not my question, I will bring Alan's question about the 12th grade, and instead, we're going to try and get input on the limitations for 12th grades with zero seats, and we're going to be returning students. Did we get more information?
I have, I actually reached out to Mayor Gans, and at this time, I'm going to recommend that it remains at zero at this time.
Yes.
And just to echo from years past, the grade seven goes along back when we, there were zero seats available for last year, and zero from the previous year, just, it's still moving forward with that. And are we foreseeing that that will continue through, so next year, grade eight will have zero seats, and moving forward, or?
We'll continue to look at that. It will depend on if students leave.
Sure.
And we always reevaluate that every year. We look at that, it's that bubble that's going through, and it will just depend if we can open it for one or two, but we would do that in concert with Tom Houshy.
Okay. Thanks. John?
Yeah, I'm glad it's staying at zero seats for the, you know, for the senior. And just as, my perception of a clarification of what Alan was mentioning the prior meeting was not so much that he was advocating, and again, this is just my interpretation, not so much that he was advocating for it to change from zero, but he was bringing up that discussion based off of the other policy that was describing the, you know, what the requirements were for the three-year graduation. And it wasn't necessarily that he was saying he wanted to change this year.
Thank you.
When a new student comes into the district on a school choice, as a school district, public school district, do you have to accept everybody who comes in? Does the school that they're coming from use their release paper? How does that whole process work? I'm just curious. Maybe I shouldn't be, but I'm curious.
No, it's a great question, because there's some ambiguity around that. What we have been advised, and what pretty much, I'll say, most districts follow this advice, which is, if you really look closely at the regs, we have to accept the student. However, we are able to decide placement for the student. So it necessarily doesn't mean that, depending on the given situation, the student that we've accepted would necessarily attend the high school. There might be a better alternative type of place, and sometimes that could involve special education issues, if that's pertinent to it. However, what the statute states is that really the principal can decide placement. And that's all it states. So there's a lot of interpretation around that. As I said, there are some districts that, and not many, that will kind of say, "Well, because of XYZ reasons, we're not going to take you." However, that could be an issue of litigation. And so our, we've been advised that, no, the statute states that if you have room, unless there's a lottery, because your seats are, you know, filled, that you need to take them. What we do, though, is we require a complete packet, so that we're able to look at who this student is, and really then look at where best should this student be. Particularly at the elementary level, where we do place a student. But if it was a situation that we felt with other cases, that there could be more of an alternative placement for the child, we would then look at that.
Okay, so the cost is $5,000, correct? And the cost of educating a student is a little bit more than $5,000. Probably at least double that, maybe even tripled. So if we have a student coming in with special needs, then, or an alternative ed placement, then it really puts a lot of burden on the district, correct?
Well, definitely if someone is coming in with some sort of alternative placement from the beginning. Usually, we probably normally wouldn't see that. The special education student's really not a concern. I think if you ask other districts, or even principals, the concerns become more when they are, could be discipline, or attendance issues. And that's, you know, just very difficult to manage sometimes. And we do. It's not the majority of our students that we see that way, but life is life, and could we see students like that?
Yeah.
Sure.
And an alternative placement might be, at an upper level, that the child is in need of tutoring outside of the building. So that can be considered alternative. You still accept the child into the district, but the principal has discretion as to where that education may take place.
Yeah.
And it would be case by case, depending on what the situation is.
John?
And I don't ever want to see, look through, look at children with special education dynamics through a prism of a dollar bill either. I want to look at them as, you know, that we're looking, we're educating these kids, and then whatever the cost of it is, is the cost of it. And then, and that's just my comment on that, so.
And I understand that perfectly, but when I look at school choice, kids coming in, you have 126, well, I think that's fantastic. So people are looking at Falmouth as a quality program. That's paramount. But we also look at kids going to charter schools. There's a lot difference in 5,000 coming in, and what's going out to a charter school. So that's when I bring up the cost, because there is quite a difference in cost when we look at school choice and charter schools. Understand the situation with special ed, because maybe that's part of what we do. We're public education. The Statue of Liberty is out in front of our buildings, and we take everybody, and that's fantastic.
But that's good. We do take everybody.
Yes, that's right.
Any other comments or questions? I have a question, Charlie, about when we'll know about the kindergarten seats? So when, when does that typically happen?
It's actually, am I briefing? And so I can just say it now, where the dates are. I'll make sure I give you the right dates here. So the week of March 20th, Monday, March 20th, Tuesday, the 21st, Thursday, the 23rd, right here in the admin building, from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is our kindergarten registration. And on the Wednesday, March 22nd, from 5:00 until 7:00 p.m. is our evening registration. So the week of March 20th is kind of that first round, which really ends up giving us the majority of our enrollment.
And when will we know how many seats?
What we will see is, we'll get a good sense at the end of that week of where we are at, and it'll let us know to if we're on pace where we were in previous years, in terms of the number of folks that we see. So usually, if at that point, we've also accounted for all our preschoolers, because sometimes there's a little lag with those who are in our preschools not coming to the registration, we have to kind of sort that out, and reach out to them. Usually by that following week, we've got a good sense of our numbers, and the breakdown too of schools.
And last year, so I know, two years ago, we had an unlimited, about two years ago, we did unlimited seats for kindergarten. Last year, I'm not remembering what it, how many seats we had.
It ended up being, to be announced, and it was unlimited, because we were found. So it's kind of, we moved to, if we're going to foresee a problem, then we might want to actually put a number to it. Elsewise, history has shown the unlimited number we've managed.
Thank you.
I have a question about the registration. Do you want to wait until reports are coming? Should I just ask now?
Why don't you ask it now? That's relevant.
So I'm just wondering if, there's, right now, there's only one evening registration time? I think it was that way last year as well.
We had added that last year.
Right. So how did that, how did that play out? Did that end up being the more busy of the days, or?
It was well attended. It's why we're redoing it, because it was great. But it's funny, throughout the whole week, and we were all here, it's a steady flow throughout the whole week. It's just steady.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I would imagine that for people that were, those evening registrations would be really, really important. So I just wanted, I was curious whether or not it was really well attended, and there should be more of them, or if it was just sort of.
Yeah, it was really, yeah. It just kind of, it didn't stick out by itself.
Right.
It was just kind of right in the flow of the others.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We're going to move on to acting on the Model UN field trip.
Do you need to vote? I'm sorry.
It does not say to vote, so I'm going to follow the public forum. Follow that to a T right now. Hello, Bill?
How are you? Good. It's a great pleasure that I come before you again to ask your permission to bring a group of students to Boston for the weekend to attend a Boston College Model United Nations Conference. We've managed to put together a delegation of 16 students. If you look at the table in your packet, they will be sitting on various committees of great importance in the world today. They range from the International Monetary Fund to the Environmental Summit in Paris. We have several members of the British Parliament in 2016. And one comment which I would like to make about this particular series of committees is that what we're going to have here is a series of students, a number of students, who will know more than we know about those particular committees and those events that are taking place in the world. I'm very excited about the International Monetary Fund attendance. We also have a student who will be a delegate on the Wall Street Commission. We also have a lobbyist who will be given a budget, and it's a real person, a historical person, who will be given a budget, and she will try and influence several of the committees in the entire conference. She will be going from one committee to another, trying to influence the policy. This is going to be very interesting. I've never had a student do something like this. The conference will take place at the Western Poplye Plaza. Poplye Place, I guess it's called. And it will, we will not miss any school. We'll be leaving after school on Friday, and coming back on Monday in the afternoon. You will see that there are five committee sessions of about three hours long each, in which the students will have to negotiate, and give speeches, and present their position as representatives, several of them of the country of Spain. We chose that country because of its position in the European Union, its involvement in the migratory crisis in the Mediterranean, and its role as a bridge between our countries and Latin America. Spain does have a very special role to play in that position. So our students will be taking the position as representatives of Spain. They've had to study and do research on Spain, are in the process of doing it, in those particular committees. It's quite an exciting event for me, and there will be, there will be a midnight crisis, on which several of our delegates will be awakened at around midnight, and they will be brought down to a room and made to resolve a crisis that they have not been expecting. And it'll take two to three hours, perhaps, and then they will have a break the next morning from the committee session that meets on a regular basis. So this is trying to simulate what it is to be a member of a committee like that. Any questions about this?
I just, the $243 price?
Yeah. It's, it is a delegation fee, and there is also an individual delegates fee, and there are hotel, two nights in a hotel.
And that's, is that per child?
Per student.
Okay. And all kids who wanted to go are able to go, financially?
All kids who have, are members of the club, and who have been able to, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't know there was a money issue, and?
So far, we have not had a money issue, but we have had, we've also been able to raise funds to mitigate the cost.
And all your chaperones? Do we have the names of your chaperones, and they're queried and fingerprinted?
Yes. Judy Fenwick will be chaperoning along with me, and this is, again, the, I think, the sixth or seventh year that she's.
So it's just the two of you?
The two of us.
Okay.
Yeah. With 16 students.
I just want clarification.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Thank you. And a second? Any discussion? Yes, John?
Yeah, there's a discussion point for March 7th, Friday, March 17th, in downtown Boston, is ground zero for St. Patrick's Reverie. I just would appreciate if you got, if you all were very much in tune with that, and what that entails.
Absolutely. They will not leave the hotel premises. We will be deep in committee practice.
They might be woken up at midnight to go work, right?
Could be, yes.
Hopefully we didn't ruin that.
Demonstrations is a surprise, yes. There will be Reverie, indeed.
Take a vote, or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay. Now to Nancy Ashford, for her request for an acceptance of a grant for Falmouth Road Race in the amount of $17,700 for a new basketball court.
Very exciting. Things are changing rapidly in the landscape of Mullen Hall School. Very exciting.
I believe you have information in your packet, and I want to say that this really was generated from our student government last year. Kids started talking about wanting a basketball court. And we do have some space out back near the garden, there's some tar, but for supervision and for kids to walk back and forth around the building, start a game, end a game, and to supervise it, it just didn't feel safe enough. So through this grant, we can have it on the front field.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion. Accept the donation for the Falmouth Road Race for the basketball court at Mullen Hall School.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question. Did, does there have to be signage that recognizes them for this donation, do you know, or can we?
That has not come up. It hasn't come up for conversation.
Because I know there's rules about that. So just wanted to be sure we were going to do it, or stop rolling it.
There was a signage with the baseball at Lawrence.
Right.
There always is.
The scoreboard.
Yes.
We've been putting a logo on it.
Right.
You have to be very careful.
Yeah.
If that does come up, if you would bring it back to this committee, that would be great.
And if I may, since we, not necessarily for this specific idea here, but the notion of signage in general, that came up in prior committees, and I just want to kind of throw it out there, just like the sports venues, to have a time constraint on that. Because, for example, if somebody gives, you know, $100,000, and then 10 years from now, another group is giving $400,000 for the same venue, we may want to just start, you know, thinking about timeframes of how long a time theoretically, you know, a name could stay on the field, or something like that.
And I think that would have to go back to the policy. Right now, there's no, we can't. Yeah, no, no. Correct. No time ties, right. So that idea, I guess what I'm saying, would have to go to the policy.
Okay. So we had a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Congratulations.
Great job, Nancy.
Thank you very much, Falmouth Road Race.
Thank you.
Come, you're going to have that like a grand ribbon cutting over there with all your new fans.
One event for both new additions.
I would love to come.
And the Mass Department of Transportation, they've been active during our Walk to School Day. They love our walk from Surf Drive, so they joined us, and they're offering to enhance and support our.
and support our kickoff.
Excellent.
That's great.
Thanks. Okay. And so now, we're at routine business about approving the minutes, and there was a new copy of the minutes that were at your seat. Just, there was one change from hearing to forum for the school choice. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from January 24th?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Walter. A second, though? Second from Kelly. All in?
Just a discussion point?
Yes, discussion.
If we could just have, in the section of where it was about the computer donation, if we could change the spelling of Clark Winn's name to, from W-I-N-N to G-U-I-N-N?
Oh, yeah.
Other than that, I'm fine with the document, yeah.
Okay. We got that. Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And now, we're at here, everything.
And I will just do, call out one piece, and that is actually two pieces. Mr. Murphy and I have gone to the different school councils to talk about the budget. So, we've spent a lot of time and work on that, and it just, we did it a little bit differently this year, because I liked meeting with smaller groups and having conversations in a different setting than doing all the elementary schools together last year. So, that was just a change that we did this year. And then the other piece that is important for me to just highlight for you is number three, and that's, we do have a committee together now, looking at reviewing the district's athletic fields, and which will include considering a multipurpose field at Falmouth High School. So, we are, we started that, we've had two meetings, and Sonya and I are looking at really crafting a schedule to kind of have regularly scheduled meetings to take a look at this. And I see it, I see the purpose being two things. One is looking at that, that idea of that multipurpose field out at Falmouth High School, which I've spoken with Mary Gans and Kathleen Burke, and they are very much in favor of that. Number two, there's another issue, and that is making sure that any fields, that we're looking at, all the fields, that are the responsibility of the Falmouth Public Schools, because they aren't necessarily in the best shape. So, I think we need to be doing those two things concurrently. So, that was my, the two things I wanted to highlight.
Can I just make a comment and something else, Dan?
Sure.
The tour of the Upper Cape Regional, I just, I would be really interested in going on that tour, so maybe if you remember your year.
This is the first time I have done it. I have not been to Upper Cape since I worked at the Lawrence School, and it has changed dramatically over the years in terms of programming. And I went for two reasons. One is that we, Sonya Teller and I went with members of the FinCom to talk about budget and ask questions about their budget and that type of thing, and then also generally toured the facility. And the facility is amazing. And if you want to ever go up there, let me know, and I can arrange that for you.
I think that would be great to...
I'd love to.
I think they're also expanding an HBAC program.
Yes.
Programming, expanding that, building up there. So, it is an impressive area.
So, I would be more than happy to reach out and for anybody who would like to go.
Shows, I think it would be good information for us to have.
Yes. Thank you.
Leah, I just have a comment.
Yes.
With regards to the field discussion, as sort of a pertinent note, and we could mention it to the other field committee members too, that I'm in discussions with Lisa Reed, the Director of Parks for the city of Newburyport, who just recently put in a new turf field at their location, and she's willing to discuss the full spectrum of topics with us, and we've set up a conference call to move forward with that. I think that's a good idea to do that. So, the thing, the reason I brought it up actually is that folks could start thinking up a couple of questions that they might have, just that, that we could send her ahead of time, just so she'd be ready for it.
Sure.
And they're also moving forward on that sports complex with Mike Sherman and a group right in the Barnstable Airport area, and that's gonna be a multipurpose field as well. So, that might be a contact as well, because if there's new fields going in, obviously a lot of concern is what's been put into fields, and the concern for carcinogens and things of that nature, and health concerns for kids. But I think as more and more of these turf fields are going in, how progressive are they getting, how conscious are they, and I think these are probably some good people to ask questions to.
Excellent. Thanks. Okay. So, questions for the directors, or if you guys want to highlight anything? Sonya, all right. We'll start with you. Do you want to highlight something?
Yes, please. On the continued summer professional development, I just wanted to make sure that I call it that that's something that Charlie's office is also working with us on. So, it's important just that we're continuing with the same PD providers to make sure that we're providing that experience for more of our colleagues, so we have that shared understanding. So, Deb Harris returning, and then Han Dolan from Matt's Hall in the SEI. Thank you.
Excellent. And it looks like that's a great opportunity for teachers, and that there are two different times that they could do it, and they could take advantage of both opportunities, which is key for those 15 PDPs in SEI and the 15 PDPs in SPED.
It's feeling fast.
And super early, too, so...
For summer planning, we wanted it out there as early as we could.
Great. Zach, do you have anything that you, oh, does, any questions for Sonya? Nope. Okay. Zach, do you have anything you want to highlight?
Yeah, just briefly, in my report this month, I talk about, or for this meeting, I talk about the work our grade level leaders are doing. It's 27 of our educators in the district who I work with monthly, and just wanted to give you an update on the various projects we're working on.
That's great. Zach?
Yeah, just, Zach, what would you say would be the delta, the difference between the 2016? I see it said the mass curriculum framework for science and technology. What's the key differences that they have?
From the prior standards, there were grade spans of standards, so third, fourth, and fifth grade, all shared standards, and the districts had the opportunity to decide what will fifth grade teach, what will sixth grade teach, and so on. And now, each grade level has their own specific, as designated from the state. So, as we go through them, we try to look at, especially for our teachers, and say, you know, are you teaching anything that's radically different that you weren't teaching before? And then trying to identify ways that we can support them as we roll that out.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. And Charlie?
Any kindergarten registration?
Any questions or comments for Charlie? Okay. Cindy, do you want to highlight anything?
No, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
Just a comment, just seeing firsthand your team at work and working directly with you two as well, nothing but high praise for the job you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know you're working on a video. I would hope that that would be a kickoff here at one of our school committee meetings.
That is the plan.
That's excellent. I'm looking forward to that.
As my, my report speaks to the fact that we shared out at the Technology Advisory Board, and a lot of folks there were blown away at all the things going on, and we really need to be able to share that with the community. So, we figured the next step would be a video to kind of capture some of that. And thanks to the Enterprise for the article that they did.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? And Patrick, anything you want to highlight?
You know what, I want to thank, and I know Nancy's been talking with them and thanking them, the custodial staff this time of year. These guys are working hard, keeping the facilities running and cleared off, and they work with the town DPW, but I want to thank the guys.
So, although, water quality, is that a lot of testing on water in the schools?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
We're staying ahead of that, because you've seen it in the new, yeah, and so we started meeting with the town months ago.
Last spring.
I think, yeah, when we, it first started to trickle out, and we started meeting to get, really get ahead of it. So, we started having meetings with the water superintendent, with Marina Brock from the county, just to keep checking in to make sure that what we're doing is appropriate. We've had our maintenance people at those meetings, and we're in really, really good shape.
That's great.
Again, it's just one of those proactive, stay ahead of it.
Yeah. We really appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. Are we sending the 504s to the county, or are we sending them to a private lab? Who's doing...
So, the guidance that we were given, both by the town water department and the county water department, is to use the kits that they recommend as sort of the baseline management kits.
Yeah.
And if, that would be the baseline that we'd test on a regular basis, and if something came up on those kits, then we would call on the county to do something.
Okay. That makes sense.
And keep in mind that we've been, we've been working on this for a couple of years now, in terms of changing out fixtures, changing out water bubblers, so it's all sort of cumulative.
Right.
And we started that a couple of years ago, but the testing's gone on. We looked at our documentation, how are we doing it? We passed it by the water superintendent and by Marina Brock, and we tweaked a couple of things in terms of how it's logged, I wanted signatures, and we put the actual testing tapes right there. So, we're, we're in really good shape, and we're ahead of this one. So, I'm very happy about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. So, now we're on to the reports from the committee members. Any guests here?
I have a report from the collaborative. Two things I'd like to highlight. One is that a subcommittee has been formed that will begin researching next month about the possibility of a recovery high school. Does the district, do all the member districts in the collaborative see the need for it or things? So, information will be coming forth, okay?
I'm very interested in hearing about that.
Me, too. Absolutely.
Yeah. I knew people. I mean, it's, everything I get on that, I'll bring you. And the other thing is that I talk about every year, that I smile about, is the ASLP program with the 210 students now. I'm happy to say I've watched that number grow over the years, and it's just, you all know, it's just a remarkable program. And we voted this month to approve their handbook. Now, they have the handbook about when lights out and all different kinds of things. Anybody, you can go and visit it anytime you want, you know, any member district that wants to go out. I mean, if you want to go look at their little orientation, just the facility itself is phenomenal. And one year, we got really into, we got to drive a boat, which I crashed on the rocks. You know, they have, they have, no, they're virtual boats. Let me rephrase.
I'm glad you rephrased.
I met, I can tell by people's face, I left something out of that description. The word "virtual," right? But I'm, no, I mean, you know, just the facility alone. I highly recommend going to...
Can I ask you a question, Terry? When do teachers start with those recommendations?
Yeah, guidance counselors. Each individual district's a guidance counselor.
It's a guidance counselor.
They know the information about that.
Okay.
Okay. I don't. I mean, and it varies from school to school, so...
And that's the program that Bob Lacudera was very involved in, the science program.
Yeah.
And it, yes, and we had science teachers very much involved in that with the guidance counselors.
And that's probably soon, those recommendations, right?
I want to say spring.
Spring.
It's already going on right now.
It is? Okay.
Yeah.
It's very organized.
Yes.
It's remarkable in our district. I don't know what it's like in other districts.
No, and sometimes, sometimes there's some, a little bit of over-competitiveness for the spots. It depends upon the district. Everything's, you know, Falmouth historically has one of the top amounts of seats, so...
And how many weeks is the program?
About three.
Three weeks? And it's a sleepover?
Yep.
Right?
Not on the weekends.
Not on the weekends, so you go home on the weekends, yeah.
But something that is worth mentioning with that program as well, is it is cost prohibitive for a lot of families.
There are scholarships, though.
There are, but the scholarships are very minimal compared to the actual cost. I think the program is something like $1,500 or something, and they can only get $300 for the scholarships, which makes it really, I always worry about which students are deserving of an opportunity like that, but just don't even apply because they know they can't afford it. And I don't know whether or not we have options in the district to help it ever happens.
That's something they fight really hard not to happen, so I'll bring back that concern. But there should be full scholarships.
There absolutely should be.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other reports? Yes?
So, six weeks from, so evaluation timeline update, six weeks from today is the last date to submit observations. Just mentioning it way ahead of time, so that we're not down to the wire. We need three more observations in the next six weeks. Preferably sooner than later.
Okay. That's it? Anything else from, any committee reports? Nope. Okay. I have one. I do have, I have requested a table at the FEF Gala. If you are interested, if you have registered, please let me know, because we do just have one table, so I do need to make sure that we can all fit at that table. Okay. So, just send me an email, and I'll make sure that we have enough seats if we need to squish at the table. Okay. So, any requests for follow-up information? Wow, I made it through, Terry!
So, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, period.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Any opposed?
You were on time! Look at that!